Yeah.
Enough like me, yeah. Alright.
We're all ready to go.
Yeah, we'll just wait for it.
Clock is ticking down. For today's moment to do this.
All our shiny faces. Okay, really big agenda.
Longest minute of the day.
There we go.
There we go. Three thirty and I'm gonna call this meeting of the Powell River Regional Hospital District Committee at the Hall from March first, twenty twenty three. Taking acknowledgement that we are being taken place on the land of the Whamun First Nation, which they have occupied for many thousands of years. The first item on the agenda would be. Would be adopting the agenda and I would rather to suggest that since we have no number five, which is. Which is unfinished business, I'd like to insert the Chair's report in there to update the board. Activity that's been going on behind the scenes. So with that, would anybody like to make a motion to approve the agenda? Councilor Elliot. Director and Director McCormick. Any other discussion on that? See any hands, all those in favor of adopting the agenda? Any opposed, very unanimously? That brings us to three dot one minutes of the Regional Hospitals Committee at the Hall, January eleventh, twenty twenty three. Minutes. We have a second here for them. Director McCormick, any discussion or any other meetings in the minutes? Any hands, all those in favor of adopting a minutes speculated? Any opposed, very unanimously? We'll get right down to item five, which is the Chair's report. And I want to say that the board passed a motion in September twenty ninth, twenty twenty two. And the motion was that the board communicate with the Sea to Sky and Sunshine Coast Regional Hospital Districts and request issued strategic planning meeting. And that the board extend an invitation to the Powell Rivers General Hospital Facility Engagement Initiative Division of Family Practice. And the Powell River Hospital Foundation to discuss opportunities for cooperation and collaboration. And in November twenty fifth, twenty twenty one, the board had passed a motion. It said that the board directs staff to prepare a report on options for board engagement options about what current local health facilities needs are. And that the committee recommend the board postpone consideration of the Powell River. General Hospital Engagement until September, which we did, as I reported above. So turns out that we were able to set up with the help of staff. A meeting on Monday with the Chairs of the Sunshine Coast and the Sea to Sky Regional Hospital Districts and we had a. A really good Zoom meeting. And the agenda for the Zoom meeting was three items, future collaboration within the regional hospital districts. Community issues around access to healthcare, what role, if any, we play. And Vancouver Coastal Health cost share request. Request, timing and communication plans. And it was a very good discussion, all three hospital districts were in the same boat that we are. Wanting to get more two-way communications with Vancouver Coastal Health about their annual cost share request, which is. Most of the contact frankly with that we have with Vancouver Coastal Health. A little bit more time to deal with that. We want to get those in a coordinated basis, so all three hospital districts together. Though we have the same issues and the same problem and try to deal with coastal health as a group. Opposed as opposed to individual. Sessions, so they've talked about. As far as community issues around access to healthcare, we talked about a model that's going. On around the Alberta Claypot Regional District where they have. You know, a big coalition of people that are affected by hospital services in the area and they felt with the community to try to. You know, deal with island health in their case and. Seems like there's quite an appetite between the other two. Neighboring regional hospital districts to get into that too, so it was a good. Productive meeting, I thought, between the chairs and we'll find to have. Some more regular meetings as the year goes on. And we are in fact having a joint meeting. With Vancouver Coastal Health on Friday that's gonna take place in Seashell where all of the regional districts. Regional hospital districts will be there and Vancouver Coastal Health will be presenting an introduction. To that, I'm going to attend that as the other hospital district chairs are. And I expect later they will be coming and making a presentation. To our regional hospital. I wanted you to know that that the work was ongoing and I was. Pretty excited that the other hospital districts were seeing. The value of working together and things like that and might give us a little more influence. On what's going on. And you know, a big issue was traveling and connections to the institutions in Vancouver. Vancouver Coastal Health is concentrated there, that's where the bulk of their expenses and their money and their patients are frankly. And we need a way to get a little more attention paid to local services, so. Any questions about that? Continue on in that direction and. Again, getting together with the local groups as well, the Division of Family Practice and the Hospital Foundation. Try to get things moving in a concerted way. Clearly.
I thought of a question. So it sounds like we're promoting this Alberta Claypot model. Would it be appropriate to have some education for the board here? Around that model so that we are understanding what it is that we're promoting?
At this stage, that was just an introduction that one of the, one of the hospital district chairs was aware of and they were trying to bring it to the rest of them, but. Having some education on that, I think that's important looking at other models. I, I know other regional hospital districts in, in different areas of the province are interested in working together on things like that. But also taking a really good look, which we, I've never done in my time on the regional hospital district, which is. Five and a half, six years now. Taking a really good look at the legislation and at our terms of reference to see exactly what we're supposed to be doing according, according to our. Our mandate and our terms of reference and all those, I think there's a, there's some research that needs to be done. But this is basically an opening step. Trying to get a bit more of a grip on what's going on rather than just being a rubber stamp or saying you've asked us for money, we're gonna pay it. We want the best healthcare we can get in the area, we're unlikely to refuse a cost share request if it's gonna provide better health services. Everybody in the region, but you know, we need to have, I think, a little more input on what's going on. Early days, but you know, it's receiving. A good reception so far. Agenda to respond, there it goes. Now we have correspondence, we got two items of correspondence, is there any business arising from the correspondence? See any, so we will go on to the next item. Wow, eight point one. Regional Hospital District twenty twenty three budget. Green in there, Chief Financial Officer, would you like to go over it for us? Give us the highlights, please.
Thank you Chair, yes, I have a short presentation. And so I'd like to share my screen if that's okay.
Okay with me.
Thank you.
And we can see it here on the screen.
Okay, thanks. So I'm pleased to present the final twenty twenty three budget for the Powell River Regional Hospital District. In this budget, I will go over the assumptions that have been used in preparing the budget, the general operations, which includes. The site at Abbotsford and Joyce Avenue and the. These site at our, on Arbutus Avenue. And I'll go over the Wellington Creek Village operations and the lease payment, Vancouver Coastal Health cost share requests. The reserve fund contributions that are budgeted for twenty twenty three. And the residential tax rates per one hundred thousand that are projected from this budget. The assumptions that have gone into this budget are for operational costs, we've estimated what it's going to cost to, for example, to operate the Abbotsford Street building and insurance. For the facilities. Return on investments, we're projecting two percent, we probably will get more than that because the interest rates have increased significantly. Vancouver Coastal Health cost share, we're projecting the debt for the cost share at five percent. The reason that we're projecting five percent is because the debt will be between five and ten years, one is going to be short term for five years. And then the other one is going to be ten years and the Municipal Finance Authority of B C. Where we get the funding from is projecting the ten-year interest rate at four point three one percent. So the actual interest rate might, might vary from that, but that's what's gone into this budget. The tax rates, as I mentioned, are all expressed as a residential tax rate per hundred thousand, so the tax rates for business, industry. Utilities, et cetera, are, are different rates than that, they have a different multiplier. And the twenty twenty two actuals that you see in this plan are projections. There is only a couple of adjustments. From these projections and so it's not much, not much has changed. The operations that alluded to are the Abbotsford Street building, which is leased to the Mclat Recovery Society, so there are no costs projected in this budget for that site other than just building insurance. The Abbotsford Street site, there's five thousand dollars budgeted just in case we need to do some debris removal, danger tree or general cleanup in that area. Legal fees are projected at fifteen thousand, just in case there are some legal fees needed during the year. Professional fees at ten thousand and insurance, we're projecting a ten percent increase. Any of these costs that don't, that don't get spent in twenty twenty three would be rolled forward to the reserve. Vancouver Coastal Health cost share. In this budget, you will see the balance of the cost share request that was approved in twenty twenty one. And the seven hundred and ninety one thousand, seven hundred and fifty six dollars for the cost share request that was approved in twenty twenty two. And both of those cost share requests were mostly from borrowing, there was a bit from reserves, a hundred and eighteen thousand from reserves. And over the year end, we had to use some of the funding from reserves. For the one cost share request. Because the borrowing deadline, the deadline to drawdown for borrowing was December twenty second. And we received invoices after that date, so we had to borrow from reserves to make the budget balance. And then we'll pay those reserves back in twenty twenty two from borrowing, twenty twenty three from borrowing. The Wellington Creek Village, there's one point one million dollars in lease revenue in the twenty twenty three budget. And debt payments again of one point four eight million dollars. And as we mentioned in, in previous budgets, there's a three point three percent interest rate on that debt. And in twenty twenty four, that debt will renew and will, it'll be renewed at a different interest rate, so that interest rate is uncertain. And the maintenance reserve, we have a two hundred and forty thousand dollar annual contribution budgeted for twenty twenty three. That is to take care of the building envelope that the regional hospital district is responsible for. And that reserve is estimated at two point two seven million dollars at the end of twenty three. The contribution to the reserve fund is budgeted at four hundred and ninety seven thousand, two hundred and forty six thousand. And the reason that it's so large is that we have a contribution that we have to pay back from borrowing. In, in twenty twenty three, so the actual contribute, the actual impact that will make on the reserve is a hundred and fifty two thousand. And then three hundred and forty five thousand of that is just to pay back what was used in twenty twenty two. So we're budgeting, the balance at, at the end of twenty twenty three is projected at four point eight million dollars. And we're also planning to use that, much of that funding, about four million dollars of it to pay down the Wellington Creek Village debt. To mitigate the interest rate risk. And then any funds that aren't used can be used towards asset renewal, replacement or upgrades as the board decides. So what this means is a, a requisition increase of three hundred and thirty five thousand dollars. And that is a large change, but in terms of tax dollars, what that means is about an increase of about two dollars and ten cents per hundred thousand. So the tax rate in twenty twenty three would be fourteen dollars and thirty one cents for most residents. And eight dollars and twenty six cents per hundred thousand. For residents of the Tlaman Nation. And for a cost of an average home, what that means is for most of the regional hospital district at the tax rate of fourteen dollars and thirty one cents. It's about eighty seven dollars per year. And within the Tlaman Nation, about fifty dollars per year. And these are just some comparisons of rates in different areas. I showed this at draft one and I'll just go over it again. So the regional district is at the lower end of the ranking, we are about thirty fifth. In forty one being the lowest, the lowest ranking, tax rates per hundred thousand dollars. And Tlaman is thirty eight. Of forty one in the ranking, so. So our tax rates, you know, are, are quite low compared to other regional districts. And B C wide, we're also in the lower, in the lower end of the range, we're about a hundred and twenty eight of a hundred and forty one. And Tlaman is about a hundred and thirty eight of a hundred and forty one. So the next steps for the budget is adoption this month, the March twenty second board meeting. So if anyone has any questions, I'll stop sharing my screen now.
Director Lennox. Yeah, thank you for the presentation, very detailed as usual. We just kind of flew by that and I wondered maybe a little more detail on the ten percent, I think it was insurance increase. For the year, seems like, I know insurance is. Crazy world, but is that a normal increase? Large increase compared to normal, what do you see for the future?
That is a, that, through the Chair, that is a large increase because we have been seeing larger increases, but that being said. Our increase in twenty twenty two was less than we actually anticipated, I think we ended up at about eight percent. And so, you know, we're thinking that ten percent should cover, should cover any increase. Cause the market has, it was quite a hard market for a while and it has, it does seem to have leveled off a bit.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Director McCormick.
Thank you Chair, I have a question and it pertains to page eight of the report, the section titled Financial Impact. And it says that the, the tax rates per hundred thousand in twenty twenty three. Will be less than those of future years when the full year of debt payments for the cost share request will be required, I'm just wondering. I, I thought we were paying a full year already and I'm just wondering what that, what that refers to.
Thank you Chair, yes, because the, the borrowing is, we only draw down as we need the funds. So the full, the full debt payments won't be incurred until twenty twenty four, in twenty twenty three. To date, we've only drawn down one point five million dollars of the, of the debt for the cost share request. So if we borrow all of the funds by the end of twenty twenty three, the first principal payment. Won't be due on the large, the large debt until twenty twenty four. So there will be an increase in twenty twenty four to account for the, the greater principal payments.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Director Fall, I didn't see you on the screen.
Oh, thank you, sorry, yeah, thank you Chair. Just a couple of points and, and two small questions, first I'd like to. Thank Ms. Greenan for the, the notes, like I think those notes really helped me walk through, I mean, this, this budget is, is. More complicated than most of our service budgets, following the pathway of all the interest payments and debt payments and transfers to reserves and so on. My first point I'd like to make is that I, I was actually very happy to see the modest cost of the name change. That we went through and I don't know if there'd be more cost to that, but six thousand and change seems definitely not very expensive, so I was glad to see that. The financial impact section mentions. You know, that the, it show, it indicates that there will be future increases in requisition once. Payments on the recent debt reflects a full year payment, so I understand that to mean this year doesn't have. That yet, so that, you know, that may limit our appetite to take on more debt. Until we pay down the debt a bit, I mean, or not, because our, our levels are actually. Pretty low as, as, as Ms. Greenan just showed, so I, I appreciate the comments from the Chair earlier about the communication with the other regional hospital districts. So I guess my question, my first question is, and I have two questions, is does V C H. Do they ever receive information or have they ever received information? From the regional hospital district on our debt loads and payments to help in their planning and proposed cost shares?
Good question, Ms. Greenan has your hand up.
Thank you Chair. I'm not actually sure how to answer that question, I don't think that they've actually ever have received that information that I'm, that I'm aware of. I haven't communicated that to them directly.
Okay, thank you, and maybe that's something, you know, for the Chair to think about with the other. Hospital district chairs, maybe that's something we might share, just, it might help them to know if we're carrying a heavy load, this, this, it looks like. Twenty twenty four, it will go up is what it, it, the, the financial plan shows and then it drops off a little bit. The requisition will be higher, so we're actually already projecting an increase in requisition without even considering possibility of new borrowing this year for, for new things, so that's. That's the, the issue there and it's, you know, we, we deal with those things, the hospitals cost money and we need to take care of people, so. The, the second point and question is that the, I think.
Go on Director Fall. Do another question, I'd like to give you part of the answer to the first one.
Oh, sure, thank you.
You know, as I said earlier, myself and the other regional hospital district chairs will be meeting with Vancouver Coastal Health. In Seashell on Friday to get preliminary figures on their capital budget for the year. And they will certainly hear about our concerns about debt. And the cost of debt servicing on Friday. I don't, I don't know if they heard that much before, but they certainly will on Friday. So.
Okay.
Hurry to interrupt, go ahead with your next.
That's okay, thank, thank you, the second question is quite short and I just like to preface it by saying the. The proposed four million to pull down the Wellington Village site, the, the, their cost. I think that's a really good idea, we have the money in the reserves, they don't make as much on interest as, as debt payments, as debt interest, so. That makes sense to me, I was just, it, question related to note number ten and I was just, it's more for me, it's absolutely for me to understand. What's going on, so then if I understand that the amount there, the, the proposed debts of. So it's a reserve fund contribution, so contribution of a hundred fifty two. Plus eighty six, nine forty, plus three hundred forty five, is that, you know, the item in the, in the budget, which is on page. Sixteen, I guess, is that meant to equal the three hundred forty five thousand, two hundred forty six that's on, in the budget associated. Note, so that's on, you know, the section twenty reserve, it says a transfer of a five hundred eighty one, eight eighty six. And, and if it, if it, if it is, I mean, that's just trying to, I'm trying to understand because I, just so to make sure I know what's going on and. If it is, then, then there's maybe a small typo because those three add up to. Five hundred and eighty four thousand, one eighty six, so it's just a little difference and I'm just trying to make sure my understanding is correct that that is. Supposed to reflect that. Or my math is wrong, but I don't think it is.
You agree then?
Thank you Chair. Yes, it should, so. We had to borrow funds over year end because. Because we didn't have our borrowing request in, in time. When the other invoices came in for the cost share request, so the amount that you see down at the very last page of the agenda. That four hundred and ninety seven, two forty six. That should equal the three hundred and forty five thousand. I'm just going up here. Those should equal the three hundred and forty five thousand, so there might be, there might have been a small typo or like an adjustment after I prepared the report.
Okay, I mean, I think, I think it's just the, the, the interest, the section twenty reserve interest plus contributions adds to the five eighty one. It's just the five eighty one, eight eighty six doesn't quite add up to the three items in note ten, so it's really small, I think it's, it's minor, I just. If I understand that's what it's supposed to be, I'm, I'm satisfied and I, I think the overall it's great and I really think. I'm really happy to move forward with it. Thank you, Ms. Greenan.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Director Gisborne.
Oh, thank you Chair. I'd like to thank our manager of financial services for the, the comparison graph with us and other regional hospital districts. One of the thoughts I was having about those comparisons is, you know, we see Squamish Lilwet on the lower end. And, you know, we see other more remote regional districts up on the high end and I'm. Wondering if, you know. The, the, the value of the land per person, I think has some kind of aspect to play there. So I would suspect no Squamish, Lilwet, Westler to have very high value of land. In comparison to their population, quite often the hospital needs. Are population based and, you know, demographics, so I was just wondering. It, like, is there any figures for like the tax rate per capita? Rather than, you know, mill rate per hundred thousand dollars of the land, or is that something that would take a, a fair bit of time to kind of. Craft together or maybe something in the future years, because I'm just curious how that, how those figures works out because. You know, some regional districts have very high property value compared to their population and then. Some of them have very low property value compared to their population and, you know, when it, when it comes to healthcare needs, it's. Quite often based on the number of people we have and also the age, so I'm just kind of curious about how those figures would compare.
Greenan.
Uh, thank you Chair, that is something that I could provide in the future, I haven't done that research, but, but that would be a number that we could put together. To look at per capita as well as per one hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, uh, thank you, um, as long as it's not too onerous on you, because I'm, I'm sure you're, you, you've got a lot on your plate. Thank you, that's just my question, comment, observation, input, thank you Chair.
No other questions, I have one myself. I wonder if you can go into more detail on one of the slides I saw. With the increase of the taxation, dollar value per hundred thousand increase in taxation. For Tlaman Nation is different than for the rest of the regional district, I wonder if you could. Go into a little more detail for those who might be watching in the public about one of that difference there, I wanted to know.
Thank you Chair, uh, through the Chair, what happened was when Tlaman achieved treaty in two thousand and fourteen. What that meant was their letters patent. Required that they don't. Participate in any. Debt that was decided on before they achieve treaty. So that means that they don't participate in the debt of the Wellington Creek Village because that was, that was pre-treaty. So what we do is we have to, we split out, we take out the, anything associated with that debt. And then do the requisition excluding the, the, our Wellington Creek Village.
Okay, thank you for the explanation. There is no other questions, would somebody like to move the recommendation in the package? Director Lennox, seconded by Director Elliott. Any discussion? All those in. Are you voting?
No. I will vote though, I, I do want to vote. I'm, I'm, have to reiterate again Chair, my concern about the interest that we're paying on these cost share requests. When you look at the, you add up all the interest charges, it comes out to seven hundred and sixty two thousand dollars. In interest payments that are outlined in this chart from twenty three to twenty seven. That's a huge amount of money that we're expecting our taxpayers to fund for just purely interest on borrowing. So I'm really concerned, I, I support the budget and I'll be voting in favor of it, but. You know, as we move forward, especially in, with your discussion. You know, as we move forward, especially in with your discussions with the other um chairs. I am very concerned that this number is getting out of control, that we're being. You know, asked to provide additional cost share requests on top of additional cost share request. There's one in twenty two over top of the one in twenty one. And um it's. You know, it it's gonna end up where our budget's gonna be nothing but interest payment. So it I find it very frustrating. And I really hope that we can find a solution to this so that um we're not expected to incur constant debt. It it's a bit like provincial downloading to me because, you know, they need these requests, they make these requests for good things for the hospital. I'm not disputing that. But yet we're now taxing our taxpayers. In order to pay for it instead of it coming through the province, so um. I am very concerned about it and I think it's something we need to keep our eye on as we move forward. Thank you.
Please comment to, I share your concerns and. We have a certain amount of control over that when the board decides to approve. Uh, share requests and control when we decide how much of it can. Actually collect from the taxpayers immediately and how much to. Pay off uh to borrow money and pay off loans over a period of time, but the interest rate is getting higher. Uh, seems like the maintenance requirements are getting higher. Uh, probably because of deferred maintenance over the years. And uh certainly something we all need to be aware of. Which is why we're having the effort to get the different regional hospital districts together and provide a common voice to Vancouver Coastal Health. Anybody else? Director Gisborne.
Oh, thank you, Chair. Um, I I. Hear what Director McCormick is saying with the concerns of the interest. Uh, I think that's something that our uh manager of financial services is taking into account and I think that's one of the reasons why. Uh, we've been building up our reserves for uh when the Wellington Creek Village debt payments uh comes due, I think in twenty twenty four. And that's why we got a big chunk of money so that we can get that that principal debt down. And then we should hopefully not be, you know, spending as much money on interest. Um, and that's just. Yeah, I think that's just good financial management to, you know, be getting that debt down as the interest rates go up. So. Um, yeah, I I hear the concern of Director McCormick and uh I I also hear um from our presentations that our um manager of financial services is. Taking that into consideration and I just want to give a big thank you because uh having that money to pay down. Those capital debts, that way we we don't just get eaten alive by interest as interest rates go up is something I'm uh re- really thankful for. So, thank you, Chair.
Around the room and check out the screens. I don't see any hands up. All those in favor of the motion? Any opposed? Very unanimously. Don't believe there is any new business. Question period time. Uh, anyone from the press with us and or do you have any questions?
Thank you, Chair. Sorry, my mute was uh on there. Um, yes, I uh I'm wondering about Wellington Creek Village. I uh note in the manager's presentation that uh. There is a differential between the lease revenue and the payments that are made uh to the uh the finance authority. And uh so I'm wondering if the lease revenue is locked in uh for a term. Or whether there is an opportunity to renegotiate that with Vancouver Coastal Health at some point.
You agree with this?
Uh, thank you, Chair. The lease revenue is, we do have an agreement that extends um until twenty thirty four. Um, and then it would be renegotiated at that point. Um. Yeah, I I would have to be, we would have to open up the contract to renegotiate it earlier.
Uh, I thank the manager for that response, so I guess taxpayers are on the hook for the differential between the uh the payment and the lease revenue. Is that correct? Through the chair?
Through the chair, yes, that's correct uh. With the way that the uh lease contract is. Right now.
I think, I think the manager had a second question uh with regard to the motion that was uh just put forward. There's reference to a twenty twenty two surplus uh and it's allocated to the section twenty reserve fund. I'm wondering, uh Chair, what the uh surplus is and what the section twenty reserve fund is.
Greenin, can you answer that?
Yes, yes, thank you, Chair. The um. Surplus is um. It did did come out at the same. The same rate as I um projected in the report with the one exception that we did have one small invoice from Vancouver Coastal Health. So we had after uh the report was written, so we had to adjust the um. Re- a little bit more from the reserve, from forty five hundred dollars more from the reserve fund, which will be replaced by the borrowing. Um. So the, the um surplus is estimated at. Sorry, I stepped minded here. Oh, a hundred and forty six thousand, four hundred and thirty one dollars and um that is what the surplus will be for twenty twenty two.
I I thank the manager for that uh through the chair. Uh, what is the section twenty reserve fund?
Oh, sorry, the section twenty through the chair, the section twenty reserve fund is um. Is the reserve fund and it is projected to be at four point two million dollars. At um, oh, sorry, four point eight million dollars at the end of twenty twenty three and that is the reserve fund that we've been setting. Using to set funds aside for a future capital and to pay down the uh large debt of the Wellington Creek Village when it becomes um. When it's set for renewal in twenty twenty four.
I thank the manager for the detailed response. Those were my questions, Chair.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else, anyone else online that has a question? Now being done, we have uh no in camera session. And it is time to adjourn. Thank you very much. Very efficient meeting, even though we ate ate into the meeting the whole time, but.